It is 5:03 and I am going to open the Dartmouth Planning Board Joint, uh, Planning Board meeting and commence roll call vote. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes. At this time, I'd like a recess to enter executive session with the Dartmouth Select Board.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made by Nick Cyclepatis, second by Margaret Sweet, all in favor. Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
And Kevin Mello, yes. We will now reconvene in executive session with the Dartmouth Select Board in room 309. Okay, so I see seven o'clock and it is time to reconvene the Dartmouth Planning Board meeting of December 2nd, 2024. And we have administrative item number one, site plan review for 1402 Tucker Road. Ross, lead us in.
Okay, this is an application for site plan review for a proposal to convert an existing barn into an office space in a yoga studio located at 1402 Tucker Road. Assessment map 167 lot 95. Um, let's see, it is located within the general business zoning district as well as the Aquifer Protection Overlay Zone 3. Um, the existing house currently has a hair salon and the existing barn, as I said, would have an office space on the first floor and a yoga studio on the second. There are four seats for the salon, which would require 17 total spaces factoring in employees. Let's see, six spaces for employees for the office space and six spaces for the yoga studio, adding up to 29, and there are 30 parking spaces being proposed. Uh, I think that's it. If the attorney would like to present at this point, this would be a good time.
Good evening, members of the board. Good evening, Ross. Mike McVay from Marquand Walsh Law, 50 Homers Wharf, New Bedford. Um, so I'm here today on behalf of the owner and applicant, S&amp;N Almeida Property, um, which is owned by Kelly and Dennis Almeida. They're both small business owners, um, a couple of small children live in the area. So the idea tonight was, um, the engineer may arrive. Um, we had had a discussion earlier today about tonight and he had, uh, well, we received some pretty comprehensive comments from the DPU, the DPW. So, um, they're going to be working on the final site plan to address some of the particulars uh, from, from Paul's comments. It's going to take a minimum of two weeks to get that circulated. So the idea was, we have the space. I'll just give a brief overview and I guess answer to the questions is the best to my ability. But, um, just beef, brief background of the, of the site. The owners bought the property back in February 2020. She moved the Salon L from a different part of Dartmouth until this space. Earlier, 2024, um, through Zenith Consulting, they initiated, um, a ZBA hearing for a, um, special permit for a, um, the expansion of the non-conformance. So I got involved at the, around the second meeting. We had a total of three meetings at the ZBA level for the special permit for the, really what they wanted to do was because they want to take the existing barn, which I don't have a really good picture of, and convert it into a yoga studio and an office spaces. Uh, they needed more parking requirements required, so they're going to need more impervious space for the parking. Um, we were able to get that special permit from the ZBA after three meetings. It was recorded in October. Um, but the story behind this is, and I, you know, these folks are, they're, they're good people, small business owners. They don't understand why they have to go through site plan review. We told them because it, you know, it's a requirement. Um, they've got some really good engineers. They put together a really comprehensive site plan. Um, as you, if, most of you probably know the area, Salon L's just south of Route 6, State Road. It's in the general business district. It's, if you know the area, I did another project. It's, it's generally surrounded by residential neighborhoods. It's, it's like the easternmost point of that uninterrupted pink strip of general business over there on the zoning map. Um, moderate traffic. Uh, Zenith did conduct its own, um, traffic impact study for, through the ZBA or for the ZBA. It showed a really minimal impact with the conversion of the barn, um, into, uh, two uses. And by the way, all the uses that they current, that they have now, the, the beauty salon and the proposed two, the additional two uses, the yoga studio and the office spaces are allowed uses under Article 18. Uh, one of the biggest changes, I guess, in the site plan, and if Tom or Jamie arrive later, if they can speak to it, uh, at the, at the next meeting that we're on, is they are changing the double barrel entryway that you can see on the existent on the left-hand side. So I've been on the site, maybe some of you have too. It's pretty, it is tight to arrive in anything larger than like a small sedan. So the idea would be to improve, uh, the curb cut to make it, um, a 24-foot curb cut on the property, curb cut on the property line with two 20-foot, um, raid, raid eye. So as far as parking goes, like Ross mentioned, there's, uh, 29 required. They're, they're proposing 30. Landscaping, did I change that? Um, I think per your regulations, eight trees are required. They're proposing to, to introduce 19. The one, I should bring this up. The one, um, issue that's come up during the site plan review process was the site, Article 24's requirement that any landscape plan is stamped by a professional landscaped engineer. Um, we would be asking for a waiver if this board would be willing to grant one, just because of the, it is, it is five spaces over the 25, um, parking space requirement. It's generally, you know, it, overall, it's a pretty small project. Um, it's big to them, but it's, it's smaller in scope. Um, Zenith, you know, in an effort to, I guess, you know, keep it more in-house and not have to outsource more work and incur more costs for the applicant, uh, we would be asking for a, a waiver on that requirement. Yeah, and this is just generally, if you've been on the site, it's an old, dilapidated, probably should be condemned barn, takes up a lot of the, you know, surface area of the property. What they want to do is invest a lot of their own money to rehab it reconsiderably and, and to get the best use of the property. Um, you know, it's, it's one of these stories where it's like, you know, you know, small business owner, salon owner, her husband owns a landscape construction company. They do well enough to pour more money back into the business. I, I like this kind of story. Um, I didn't have a rendering. I don't think we have a rendering, so I used what the, the floor plans of the proposed renovation of the barn would be. But it's, but it's a net positive for the town of Dartmouth, I'd say. A stormwater plan was the biggest piece that came up during ZBA. Um, not going to speak to it because I'm not that well, but what they proposed to do is basically install this, this very modern storm scepter, um, network. So this would be, this is the existing paved parking lot, and this is where the additional parking would be. That's where the, we needed the, the relief for the impervious. And this is where they will install this, uh, storm scepter, um, subsurface infiltration. And I believe, uh, the idea is that it captures all water, uh, that, that is sent off the property. Nothing escapes the property. It's about, it's in the aquifer overlay district and it's about 500, 600 feet away from the, the river, just to the west. I can't, I'm sorry, I'm not from Dartmouth. Solid waste disposal, I know that was an element that comes up in, in the Article 24. Um, they do propose a dumpster with some shielding just to the north of the, um, of the property. Um, office space is going to be on the first floor. Yoga studio will be on the second floor. Like I said, very minimal impact to traffic in the area. It, this, this parcel is serviced by Town Water and Sewer. If you have any questions, I'm, I'll do my best to answer them.
Okay. Anyone from the board, Kevin?
Um, I don't have any questions yet, but I, I will tell you that expanding the impervious surface, uh, regardless of the, the storm scepter system, uh, that close to the river is going to be difficult. So...
Kevin, I'm, really quick regarding it. I, I'm a little bit perplexed. The special permit was already gained by the ZBA?
Yes. Yep.
So they already have it, Kevin?
Yes. I know they already have it.
So have you gone to conservation yet? Do you, do you know?
I don't, I don't know that.
Okay.
I have not.
Okay. Um, I guess for next time, we could get, um, some more information because this is very preliminary. Uh, there's, there's one thing that I know that is not, um, up with our standards. Um, and it's very simple. It's not a big deal, but you have a row of 12 parking spaces to the rear, um...
I guess that's southerly, um, you've got 12 parking spaces. Our, our zoning says no more than 10 without a break in island. You have one extra spot, so what I would propose is that you, you know, one right in the middle that, uh, the gentleman plants a couple of trees. And you would still have the proper amount of spaces required and you would not have to ask us for another waiver.
They are asking us for a waiver though from the landscape architect, correct?
Yes.
They are asking for that. And I know Margaret's going to have a question about that.
I do.
Um, and, but I'm asking, you know, I, I ask all applicants to minimize the number of waivers requested, um, because that creates a good plan, good clean plan. Um, so they are asking for that one waiver. So if there's any questions from anyone else.
Um, I have a question. What is the lot coverage, the percentage of lot coverage?
So we were, right now, it's at 30.2. Well, I can tell you exactly.
All right.
So when they, part of the, when they bought the property, what had happened was the previous owner had, had in 2005, they bought the property in 2020. They bought, in 2005, the previous owner went before the ZBA and asked for an impervious increase in the impervious surface area. Got it. Flagrantly went way over it. Um, they purchased it in 2020 and then, you know, we, I would, I'd argue, extra scrutiny was put to us during the ZBA process because of actions. So...
On the front cover of the, the plans?
30.9 is the existing impervious.
35.9, I believe.
Thirty, 30.9.
I can't read it. 30.9?
So 43.2.
Correct.
Oh, so it's 53.2 now.
Four, yeah, we've, we've, the special permit allows us to go up to 43.2.
Okay.
Ross, just for the record, can you tell me in that district, what is the limit, uh, proposed by code of the impervious surface of this property?
In the Aquifer Overlay, it's 10%.
10%.
10%.
And I'll just speak to the landscape architect. Um, it's, I feel that every plan that is over needs to have a stamp by a landscape architect.
Okay.
So I'm not, I'm not the board. I'm just one member. So I would like to see it stamped by a landscape architect. And if they don't have one, I'm sure they can get one without spending too much money.
I, I, I'm troubled at the moment. Am I wrong in being concerned that the special permit and the ZBA activity happened before us and here we are now, proposed with it as approved? Am I wrong about my feelings at this moment?
No, you, the, the ZBA gave them an approval on the Aquifer.
So we've lost, we're past the window to speak?
Right, we can't.
I, I understand that. I just want to vent and say we're troubled by that based on where it is with a few other properties that are for sale and actively looking to be developed. We're, 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 we're going to be very conflicted. This has nothing to do with you and your project. We're going to be very conflicted by these actions as we make decisions on other properties adjacent to, indoor or close.
Well...
We, we are black and white. The ZBA is the gray, so keep that in mind going forward.
I, I can't imagine why they would have done this.
Because they can, Kevin.
I, I understand they can. Why did they?
Look, we came real close on Route 6 with Kentucky Fried Chicken, going to 65%.
And that didn't?
And that board has given other people, and I won't mention names, very high on that. So you can't pick and choose.
Well, then we should just change the code if we're going to flagrantly disobey it.
Well...
Okay.
I'll say that I stand with Margaret. I, I know it's one more step for you. It's not a big challenge. It's something that's going to get approved, but as a board, I think we've been focused on landscape architecture being part of the project plans, right? We're asking for it and I think...
And if we've said no to that relief to others?
Right.
And they hear that we're now given it?
Right.
Past practices to be not...
It's a formality. It's not like it's going to be a hardship.
It's a formality.
It's just the formality. Yeah.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, absolutely. Some of them are minor. I think one question off the bat, um, has, have the plans been discussed with the building department yet? Have they've gotten a flavor for what you're trying to propose?
Yes. Yeah.
One question that came to mind, it looks like the yoga studio's on the second floor. So it's a publicly accessible space, but I don't see accommodations for accessibility. And the re, I'm not trying to play building department, that's not where I'm coming from, but should that be required, that may alter the site plan that we need to review? Um, and what that might impact. There are some grade changes. Um, so I just be cautious about whether that is going to be enforced or invoked or not. I mean, there, it looks like you have providing two handicap spaces. Um, I would like to see some sort of aisle or marking on the, um, on the pavement so that, it, it looks like there's direct access from the handicap spaces to the front building. I don't see the markings on the asphalt connecting the handicap spaces to the front door of the barn in terms of the, um, the aisle markings. Um, again, one comment, I assume that the handicap spaces are, are serving both the front building and the barn. I'm making that leap based on the review of the site plan, so I would just be cautious on that. Um, but the bigger piece is how any requirements on accessibility to that second level, uh, I don't know that the public, you say that the front, the first floor is offices.
Right.
That could be that there's no public access to that first level. Um, and it's just, it could be for owners only.
Right.
Um, I am concerned how the second floor is going to be addressed for accessibility and what impact that would have on the overall site plan development.
Understood.
No other comments?
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Uh, the generality of the word offices, is there any intent that you can share with us to be more specific? I mean, it's a salon. It could easily be a, an office for facials, another office for this, and another office for laser therapy? Or what's the scope of those offices?
I honestly don't know. I thought, I was under the impression that her husband would be using the offs for his own existing business. Um, I'm definitely not aware of any tenant, but I can find that out.
Okay, so if that's all our questions, Ross, you're asking for a continuance to a future meeting, correct?
Correct.
So if you guys are ready, I don't want to rush anyone, but if...
Make a motion that we continue this to a future meeting and/or one to be determined now, rather be two weeks or four weeks based on the applicant's wishes?
Future at this point.
Yeah, future.
Make a motion that we continue this to a future...
We have a motion by Nick Cyclepatis, second by Helio Rosa, all in favor, Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
So you guys are all set? You got a few questions? And, um, you guys can be in contact with Ross as far as when we can, when you can get your numbers from the DPW and when you're ready to come back.
My expectation is January.
Okay.
That's okay.
Yes.
Christmas, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
To Kevin's point as well on that landscape plan, we just did a project, uh, last meeting. Very simple, halfway down, small island tree. Yep. Move on. Yeah.
Understood. We'll get it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a cheat sheet I was giving to me for running. I made a copy for you because you're going to need it at some point. Onto Agenda Administrative Items number two, minutes of 2018, uh, November 18th, 2024.
Make a motion to accept and file?
Motion made by Nick Cyclepatis?
Second.
Second by Kevin Estes, all in favor. Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
And Kevin Mello, yes. Correspondence, town of, uh, Freetown, town of Westport. Any questions on any of the correspondence?
Motion to acknowledge and file?
Motion made by Kevin Estes?
Second.
Second by Nick Cyclepatis, all in favor. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes. FYI, zoning board of appeals, legal descriptions, well, anyone, any questions on them or in general?
On the zoning board?
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Nothing, okay. Um, subcommittee reports.
I have a meeting next week.
Okay, I have had nothing.
Nothing.
Okay, planners' report.
Okay, so as you can see in your packet on your computers, and I printed a, a short excerpt of it, um, the Board of Health has asked that the planning board vote to sign a petition to amend and revise certain sections of, uh, their laws regarding, um, composting in this case. Um, I included a letter that they have drafted up that they intend to send, as well as I have printed this larger document. If anyone wants to see it, I can certainly pass it around. Um, essentially, it's their highlighting of their, of the bylaw, what they would want changed.
That's all in the packet, though?
Yep, yep. All the information that I received from them will be in your packet. Um, and the select board has already voted and they asked that other land use boards also get on board. Um, I printed out and drafted a signature sheet. If the board wishes to, um, vote to sign onto that, then they can, I can pass this around.
Um, I was under the impression they were going to be here to actually, you know, break it down for us as far as what it really means. I mean, obviously composting is good. Um, is, do we have any?
Do we want to go over the highlighted parts?
Um, really, what is it, what, what I didn't understand really, Ross, maybe you can help me?
Yep.
Is, what's the bottom line for the consumer, the taxpayer, the common person?
Uh, it's, it's, it's my understanding based off the, off the conversations I had that it seems like it's just overall to continue to protect, you know, the, the environment for the overall health of the, the public, um, between soil and water. Um, there's issues with, when it comes to, uh, composting and the regulations behind it. Uh, if, if needed, I can always have him or someone from the Board of Health Office speak further on it or maybe draft an email to send out further explaining, um, if needed. I can certainly do that.
Yeah, I, I just, I mean, I don't understand, you know, is there going to be a third recycling? You know, you have your third recycling bin with food in it? Um, is it going to be available for us to bring our, our rotten vegetables to the town in the dump? Will have, uh, recycling tote for that?
They have one there.
I know that they have a program that's in, uh, uh, in conjunction with the, with New Bedford or Crapo, um, where you can get a free compost bin.
Yes, yes, I've got mine there.
This actually has to do with, um, it seems like, there's a excerpt part of this letter. "This petition results after numerous years of investigations, research and experiences by staff or the town of Dartmouth into the unintended consequences resulting from composting since the initial waste ban for gener, generators of more than one ton of food waste per week beginning in 2014." So it's regarding...
Okay.
...potential impacts.
And it, it's one ton of food waste per week.
Right, right.
So this does not have any bearing on the local...
I don't believe so, not based off of this or the information that I received.
I mean, years ago, when my father had his business, we had a bin out back and the, the local farmers would come and take the full bucket and drop off an empty 55-gallon drum and use that as feed for the, for the pigs.
Sure.
Um, or goats. Um, okay, so this tells me, okay, that, that's exactly what I was looking for, that I was not reading through the lines. So, um...
Well, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think for me to make a decision or an approval on it, um, there's numerous, there's numerous sections of this letter that have been highlighted. It would help me understand from the Board of Health or anybody else what the rationale for introducing the language or the highlighted areas are. Yes, this does clearly outline what the proposed changes are, but in order for me to act on it, it would be helpful to understand why the language is being proposed.
I agree with Helio. I'd like a little more information. Okay?
Okay.
Usually when, usually in my world, when there's proposed changes to building codes or codes in general, there's some sort of summary or synopsis as to why it's being proposed, so that the layperson can make an educated, um, evaluation of why. It would, it would be helpful to me to have that.
Okay, I think that's, should be, Ross, there's no deadline, is there?
They wanted to send the letter to the state by the 6th of December. Um, that being said, I can double check. I, I believe all the information that I received from them, I put in the electronic packet. A lot of it was, a couple of the documents was large, this one in particular, so I only printed one, um, with the time. But, um, if you guys want more information, I can certainly try to acquire that between now and then and send it out and we could do it like, um, like we would the Mylars. It's an option.
Well, we can, we can, we can go to the, we can do this on the 16th of December.
Yes, but they were trying to get the letter out by the 6th of December, which is Friday.
Oh, I thought it was 6th of Jan, well, I really...
December, right?
Yeah, the 6th of December, not January.
Is there a particular deadline associated with that, that they were trying to meet?
I'm not sure.
Okay, I was expecting to have somebody here from the...
Can I see that?
Yeah, I just went through the entire highlighted part and I cannot give you a summary and I think we need to be able to give our constituents and neighbors...
Right.
...an answer when asked accordingly.
Not going to argue that one, so...
We're going to sign...
I mean, it is good, I, I feel comfortable now, you know, that this is a thousand, I don't generate a thousand pounds of waste a week.
Right.
So this is geared to...
Restaurants?
Restaurants.
Nitrogen mitigation and all that, but I think a concise understanding on all our accounts would be helpful.
Okay, so we will ask, um, we will ask for somebody to give us a better explanation.
Okay.
You know, it'll be a little bit late, but we can follow it up after.
It seems reasonable, it's just very technical.
It is.
Yeah, I mean, on the surface, I don't think there's much to object, but if I'm going to act on it, I feel like I'm more educated than I am right now.
We seem like we're on board, but we just need...
Okay.
Um, master plan implementation report, is there anything?
Can I just chime in real quick?
Sure, yeah.
Um... Part of planner report, the site plan review twenty-four-three at four thirteen State Road, they had an extension a couple meetings ago. They, they contacted me last week and asked to be continued again. So I told them that I would just use that email as their request. That should be in your packets. So just to, just to know that they, they are aware of the thirty day deadline expiring on their extension. And they have asked for a continuance to the next meeting on the sixteenth.
And when does our, when does the thirty day expire?
It would have been soon, before the sixteenth.
Okay. So we need to take a vote to extend that yet again, another thirty days?
I think it would be safe to do that, yes.
But they've made it very clear that they want, they're asking...
They asked for it, yes. The, the, I printed the email. It's in, it's in your packets on paper, as well as the digital packets.
Okay. So, yeah, I, I feel that we should, maybe it's an error on the side of caution, but we should take a vote to extend that another thirty days.
Ross, what's the address on that again?
Four thirteen State.
That's the Vicom.
I'll make a motion to extend the application for, as, as originally proposed at four thirteen State Road, to thirty days from today?
From the expiration.
Or from...
Of the, of the expiration of the last thirty?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Kevin Estes, a second by Hila Rosa, all in favor. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Hila Rosa?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes.
Last bit from the planning department would be to approve the planning consultant hours from the last two meetings. I think it got skipped out on the last one. So that would be the hours before the meeting on November eighteenth, and then the hours up to today on the second.
Motion made to approve as presented the hours for the consultant.
Second. Motion made by Nick Cyclepatis, second by Kevin Estes, all in favor. Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Hila Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Before we get to the chairperson, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. Are you all set?
Yep, that was it for me. Thank you.
Are we, have we identified where our minds are with the master plan? I know there's been a little bit of a gap and we, we kind of talked about it three, four, or five meetings ago. Do we have a, a winter plan or a focus as a group, subject matter?
Yes.
Master plan or personal goals?
All plans.
Long-term plan.
Well, perhaps, perhaps both. I mean, we haven't, I, I feel like it needs to be brought to the surface a little bit, scratch our minds, and then maybe pick up in a meeting or two. But where, where are we at? Have we decided on what we're focused on?
I think we did.
We talked about, we talked about elderly homes, right?
Number fifty-five.
Right.
Yeah, and then the cisterns.
And the cisterns, which I'm, I'm working on.
Okay.
I already have something from the chief of District Two. I have spoken to the chief of District Three, and this week I'm going to meet with them. And hopefully, I will be able to go and actually see them because they're in Westport. Okay? And John said that we don't have to wait to town meeting. We can just implement this. Are you aware of that, Kevin?
No.
I wasn't either. So I'm going to talk to John about it.
John?
Planner, the planner we've been using, yeah.
Okay.
So we need to get that done. And if it has to go to town meeting, it'll have to go to spring town meeting. Okay. But I think that's very important, especially since the drought we've had.
Right.
Okay? And people were starting fires. I don't know if you people know that. They were throwing matches and starting fires.
Cigarette fires.
And in one, one point, what they did with the fire district that I'm with, they put a bunch of roofing nails in front of a hydrant. It's a good thing that the fire truck driver saw it because it would have gone right through the tires. Okay? It was very malicious. So we have to be very careful and we have to make sure we get that bylaw in. Because if we have another drought, and chances are we are, we need to protect the people that don't have sewer and water. So I'm working on that. And hopefully, in the next month, I'll have it all set.
That dovetails into my original concern about just the generality of our, our drinking water supply, as well as the health of the bay, well, rivers.
Okay. So I think those are the two.
Yeah.
Those are the two that I had, that we were, in my mind, that we had brainstormed.
Yeah.
So, okay. The other thing that we need to discuss as a group, and that's under the chairperson's report, is our upcoming calendar. So we have a really, really full agenda for December sixteenth. We traditionally do not meet on December thirtieth. Our next meeting now, the next Monday after that, would be January sixth. So if we meet January sixth, two weeks after that is Martin Luther King Day. So we wouldn't meet January twentieth. We then could meet January twenty-seventh. And we would then, from that point forward, at least until April first, we would be in an every other week schedule. So by skipping, having a little bit of a wanky schedule there for December and January, we get on to January twenty-seventh, skip two weeks to February tenth. We miss, by doing that, we miss President's Day. We have February twenty-fourth. Then two weeks after that would be March tenth. Then we have a holiday on the seventeenth, which was not really a holiday, but St. Patrick's Day, the seventeenth. Then we hit the twenty-fourth of March.
Seventeenth's also President's Day.
Uh, March.
February. Oh, you're right, sorry.
Yeah. So we're just moving forward. So we would be the twenty-fourth, the March tenth, March twenty-fourth, and then essentially April seventh. You know, and we, Ross could then take it, you know, and, and assume every other week as we have been doing.
So backing up, you're saying December sixteenth, followed by January sixth?
Yes.
And then skip all the way to the twenty-seventh. Basically, we skip the, we skip the twentieth, get to the twenty-seventh, so we can be biweekly again.
And then we're biweekly again. And after that, I think that really takes us even, I, I believe it's even going to skip May, May fifth is the seventh, the twenty-first, then the twelfth of May. So I think that would really put us good until we get to Memorial Day. I think we hit a, a bump with Memorial Day.
So where are we after April seventh?
Uh, April seventh, the next one would be two weeks later, April twenty-first.
Okay.
And then we're fifth.
And we're in May, uh, May fifth, St. Coutumayo.
Okay.
And then May nineteenth.
Okay.
So we skip the Memorial Day.
Skip, and we miss Memorial Day, too.
Right.
And then June second, June sixteenth, June thirtieth, July fourteenth, July twenty-eighth. We go on and on just every other week. I think we're, I think we're pretty good.
Yeah.
So, Ross, if you could put that schedule together?
Mm-hmm, certainly.
I guess just go every other week until you...
Yep. Yeah, I will work through with Michelle.
Through twenty-five.
Yeah.
Just through, through the end of December of twenty-five.
Certainly. I'll send it to you as soon as I have it. Hopefully, we skip the Labor Day and...
Yeah, if not, we can discuss that and make that minor adjustment. You know, obviously, we're not going to meet on Labor Day, you know?
I hope not.
So, okay. So that is it for the calendar. Next, under the chairman's report, I would like to address the comments of Ms. Brooks at the, that the eleven-four-twenty-four select board meeting, which were directed towards members of the planning board and repeated in our joint meeting of eleven-eighteen twenty-twenty-four due to a lack of response from the planning board. Anyone who's interested could look at the eleven-four meeting. It's four minutes and twenty seconds from the end. But I believe you all heard her repeat eleven-eighteen when we met together. Her feelings have been heard. And personally, I am disheartened that anyone would imply that any member of the planning board, including myself, any direction, any, imply that any planning board decision, including myself, would stem from anything but what is in the best interest of the town. Never should any person be considered or not considered on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, national origin, sexual orientation, or gender identity. I feel before such inflammatory feelings are shared, research should be done of an applicant. And that has not held a position for any significant length of time on their resume. This pattern should be of concern to the interviewers. It remains my feeling that rapid turnover in town personnel is counterproductive and expensive for taxpayers. And that's all I have to say. So I felt that had to be addressed. I felt that, these are my feelings. So if anyone has any questions, if not, we can move on to number five, because that's the end of the chair's report.
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Nick Cyclepatis, second by Hila Rosa, all in favor. Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Hila Rosa?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.